I will now call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM here at McAdavick Place, St. George. Good evening and welcome to the September 2024 Regular Council Meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. This is our 21st official council meeting for Eastern Charlotte and there's 20 more for us to go until the end of this council's term. I welcome all those that are attending here tonight and those that are watching us on TV or on their cellphone or computer. And I wish to welcome and thank CHCO for being here tonight. And Florence Mitchell is in the back and of course their star, Vicki Hogarth is doing the camera tonight. And our Assistant Clerk is here tonight, Chris McKinnon, and our CEO Jason Cadet. At this point where I've called the meeting to order, I'll look for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Councilor Dederaacus.
I move to adopt the agenda for the meeting of September 18th, regular meeting of council with the following additions. I would like, I moved to put under new business review of bylaw EC-06.
And that was EC, what was it again?
Oh, EC-06.
Oh, six, gotcha. Great. We have a motion on the floor. I need a second for that. Councilor Lee, great. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary? That's passed unanimously. Let me go under new business. Just remind me when to get to new business. What I'll do, Councilor Dederaacus, when we get to new business, I'll just ask you to, to maybe expand on, expand on, that's all. Good. Okay, now we move on to three, conflict of interest disclosure. This is your opportunity to do that. If there's none tonight, I'll move on to four, the adoption of the minutes of the previous council meetings. We're going to start out with August the 20th, 2024. It was a closed meeting of council and I look for a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of August 20th, 2024. Need a motion for that. Councilor McKay, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Question or comment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Move on to four B, August 21st. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of August 21st, 2024, a regular meeting of council. I need a motion for that. Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor McQuarrie. Question or comment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Four C is the September 3rd. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September the 3rd, 2024, is a closed meeting of council. It circulated two members of council. I need a motion for that tonight. Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, that's passed unanimously. We move on to four D, September the 10th, 2024, a public hearing of objections. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of September the 10th, 2024, a public hearing of objections as circulated to members of council. I need a motion for that. Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Dederaacus, thank you. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Business arising out of ministers, none, no delegations tonight. Now we move into department reports and I'll call on for the general government report, our CAO, Jason Cadet.
Thank you, Your Worship. General Government Report for the month of August. Housing Development, updates on Harvest Lane in Neon Park to bring road into compliance for future vesting of public road. Discussion with developer on proposed Brunswick Street apartment building, still in progress and receiving final funding. Discussion with Habitat for Humanity on its proposed plan for a home in St. George on Brunswick Street as well. Parks and Recreation, baseball field in St. George received installation of a pitcher's mound. We will be brushing the road in Two Canal in the fall, awaiting additional quotations for fence for the basketball court. There'll be a second quotation in St. George and we'll review next steps prior to end of season. Old ball court fence will be removed in Black's Harbor for the upgrade to that court surface. Finance auditor is expected to compile 2023 financial reports in September, should be here next week, and deliver to council a special meeting for the month of October. Water and wastewater, Black's Harbor Corporate Owners of Water Supply completed sonic survey of the distribution line from the wells to the reservoir. They did detect a water break that has long plagued the water system. Repairs planned for this month. New water exploration, engineers are gathering data for, on the adjacent wells from the corporate well owners complying, compiling pricing on a sludge presence in both ponds or lagoons in Black's Harbor. It's being assisted by Glenn Porter. Water and wastewater for St. George, meeting with industry on current future water requirements if they have changed since the indication of the water exploration project in St. George. Changing location of the exploration is also being looked at, just met on that today as well. Also ongoing work for draft plan of a third wastewater lagoon, Industry Lagoon. New lagoon is still requested by industry. As far as roads, paving coming to the end of September for Manor Road, St. George and the Arena Street, Black's Harbor. Additional quotations being collected for streets such as Granite Street and Hospital Street as part of our ongoing look to do gas tax plan here shortly. Tendering, going out for paving for the section of the farm stretch in Black's Harbor, Route 176 and a portion of the road, the ferry landing on Wallace Cove Road. Sidewalks, waiting contractor at the end of September for installing a new crosswalk at Funday High School and a crosswalk island at the corner of Latite Road in Mount Pleasant. Also working on projects for the mall crosswalks, pending discussion with the mall owner and curb work quotations for Riverview Avenue in the plaza in front of Post Office, can have that looked at as well. YMCA, ongoing work with YMCA dealing engineering regarding a childcare building and sourcing funds, discussions with the province even as recent as today. Fire, still working on dry hydrants for water supply and as well as flotation rafts for quotations there too for Second Falls. Wawa permitting and quotations. Tendering, three tender documents being compiled, garbage collection, municipal insurance and municipal janitorial services. And that's the General Government Report for the month of August.
Turn my mic back on. Thank you, Jason. Question or comment on the report to Councilor Dederaacus, you're first.
Your Worship, I just have a question for our CAO. Has a date been set yet for the auders to come in to speak to council yet?
I know they'll, they'll be on site next week. So they'll, once they compile their report, then they'll do it like most likely a special meeting typically. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move along and we're going to seven B. And we have the reports of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission and we have Mr. Alex Henderson here tonight. Alex, welcome to Eastern Charlotte tonight.
Thank you, Your Worship. And sorry, my report is late coming, so I don't know if it's in everyone's package here, so I'll just get a verbal report. Yeah, so in the past month, we had two new bylaws for the village of Black's Harbor that have gone to the Brooklyn Shore Land Registry. They went through your public hearing process and third reading. We're working with the CAO to determine a best approach to new public road subdivisions in the village of Black's Harbor. So there's a couple developments in the works that require new public roads and we're dealing with a subdivision bylaw from 1974. So it's fairly out of date and it would be good to see that updated. If you do that, you're going to have to look at updating your bylaws for the whole of Eastern Charlotte. So something to consider for council, but there's a number of benefits to that and we have discussed it before. Some ways it's good to have some clarity for your developers about what standards apply for new developments. We've submitted a new housing accelerator fund application for Eastern Charlotte and we're expecting, decision will be several months from the federal government, but we're hopeful they will release some housing dollars for this region. Yeah, so with regard to development, there's been 68 new building or development permits issued year to date, eight new in the report period, and that's about $4 million in new construction value. There's been a couple development permits been refused and these were cases where somebody changed the scope of their project, didn't need a permit. We've had 12 variances or terms and conditions approved year to date and two new in the past month. Year to date, there's been 19 subdivisions that have been approved with 43 new lots added to Eastern Charlotte with two new in the past month. With regard to zoning confirmation letters or deeds or exemption documents, new dwelling units or advertising signs, there hasn't been any new in the past month to report. With enforcement, we have 52 enforcement files that we're still working on and there is 55 that have been closed since January 1st, 2023. In the past month, there's been 13 new files have been, have been closed, so that's a pretty good progress in a one-month period. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them and if not, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, Alex. I'm going to go to council at this point. And council is pretty quiet tonight, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You can go and enjoy the summer weather tonight. I'm going to go to seven C, the fire report tonight, and we have Councilor Thompson on board here next.
The fire report for July 2024. We had a total of 22 calls. In comparison, it was 16 of August, or yes, of August 2023. And a total number of mutual aid calls to nine. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Any questions or comments? I know the, the fire department has been very busy here the last few weeks and many, quite a few calls and a part of that is because the woods are very dry right now and I'm asking everybody just to be very diligent and not start fires right now because if it does go, it's going to be very hard to stop them right now, so unless we get some rain here shortly. I'll go to seven D, the Public Works Report, and I'll call on Councilor McQuarrie.
For Black's Harbor, Public Works will continue to do regular checks on the water and wastewater treatment systems. General maintenance and checks on all equipment is ongoing. Mowing and trimming grass everywhere is still ongoing. They repaired the boom fail mower, hydraulic motor on the mower unit needed to be replaced. Fire hydrant repairs at the arena parking lot and at the playground on Main Street have been completed. The three-ton is back in service as it needed power steering lines. They're still moving equipment to the new building area down by the lagoon. They're getting ready for the C cans to come down and move the Public Works office. Dredging at the lagoon is still being monitored and moving forward, this process is still ongoing. We still have a blower down for repairs at the lagoon. Spare is being used. Our unit needs to be replaced as parts are no longer available for this unit. Quotes are being reviewed. We used the same amount of asphalt last year as we did this year. Repairs to the backhoe, a new step and toolbox were fabricated and they were preparing for the Fog Fest and I want to thank the Works crews from both Blacks and St. George. They did a great job down there at Fog Fest when they were there and everything went smooth. For St. George, two final, the final two members completed their WMS training for the year. That is, means they've all got it now. They put up a number of new signs set up for crosswalks. They had an electrical and fueling issue on truck three. That's been taken care of. Some fallen trees had to be removed in the Kent Street Playground. We've been steady with asphalt passing. New flashing lights and slow vehicle signs were added to the lawnmowers to make them more visible. We had the RCMP speed sign for the month set up at different locations in the municipality. A new school zone light was installed on Brunswick Street. We assisted the RAF Memorial Crew by using the backhoe and auger to make holes for new trees and two signposts at the Penfield Memorial Site. Truck five was taken to a body shop in Oak Bay to be assessed and a quote done for repairs. Short section of curb and gutter was installed on Brunswick Street by Vanses to help divert rain runoff from washing gravel into their driveway. And they've been also doing their water tests and samples and everything's been coming back pretty good so far. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor McQuarrie. It just proves the Public Works, Public Works have been very, very busy. Those are just really the highlighted items going on, so I want to thank Ron Groom and Ricky Levitz, both are crews. They, they have good people working for us and we're very, very fortunate. Council, council, any questions or comments? If not, we'll move ahead to Parks and Recreation. I'll call on Councilor Hat. Do you have a report tonight?
Parks and Recs four, this will be for July and August because there was no report last month. So paint was brought here for the startup of the arena this year, some broken boards over the last two months. Removal of the ads for any non-payment, so puckboard ads, there's some spaces if anybody is interested in putting your company logo down there as well, just to plug into that. There's some spares now that some of them have been removed. The dehumidifier has now been commissioned and started up by Simco. The fire marshal was in. He has some things that he'd like, some action items and some cleaning up, so they're still working on that. The new heat pump in the lobby is installed and commissioned out. The chair lift that goes upstairs to the old curling club area that we all know it as, that's been inspected and serviced, so good for another season. The new ice surface doors are to be installed. Is that happening this week, Jason?
Yeah, this week.
Yeah, so anybody that knows the old jump over the boards and slam shut latches that have been there for years, they're getting overhauled and doors put it in, so Wayne might be able to tell us how long those doors have been there, but it's been a long time. So that'll be on the go. They had a brine leak in the arena floor, so we had to chip out a spot to pick, fix that up and then repatch the floor up, so that's all been looked after. Fog City Rollers had the roller derby down there. Everything went good. It's nice to see a lot of people out and the parking lot was full. Shout out to Fire Charlotte Fire and Rescue for being the first responders for that weekend and doing the first aid. And scheduled startup date, the arena is Simco the 17th and I understand everything is running as, as of right now, right? Okay. So looks like we're, we're off to a good start with that. Canal Beach mowing, cleaning, garbage removal, the Mobi Wrap was installed for the summer. That was obviously back in July. Volleyball net was hung and cleared up for debris. Swim buoys were installed. Large amount of debris that I touched on last month had, from the flood that we had or partial flood. Painted some doors, so playgrounds were all inspected and any repairs were done. Ball fields, same deal, any linings, mowing, rolling. One thing that was to add, this case performance at the Veterans Field in St. George here for a week-long baseball camp, so that was done over the last month or so. And it was a great success for the kids too. The basketball courts, the fence out here, waiting on new suggestions on the way the fencing is and wait for some quotes, quotes to come in and they're re-quoting some prices and options on the fences. So splash pad, the filters and regular maintenance. Public Works worked with them on Canada Day, festivals and then Summer Fest, helped with that weekend. Provide tables, chairs for the Beaver Harbor, New Brunswick Day that they have down there. That's a great event, so there was some help with that. Fog Fest in Black's Harbor over the weekend, that weekend, so several events there too. That is it.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Hat. Any questions or comments in that report? If not, I'll go to community reports. Councilor Hat, do you have a report tonight?
So we kicked off the month with the annual Fog Festival in Black's Harbor. Due to weather forecast, we had to do some rearranging. We small, we pulled a meeting emergency to change some events around and some locations of them. All in all, everything went well. I want to say thank you who made it out that weekend and made it another successful event in Eastern Charlotte. Wasn't for Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue for doing all the first aid, security kind of idea. The counselors and mayor, thank you again, and all the volunteers that have come and helped for the festival to be successful. Fundy Minor Baseball Season's wrapped up for the summer. Congratulations to the players, coaches and the Umps. Sometimes people don't realize how much volunteering actually goes on to put in a ballgame for the kids and they only have three or four Umps and they dedicate their summer for them kids to be able to play, you know, safe ballgame. So I want to say there's many of them. Like I said, there's I think four in total, maybe the fifth one here in St. George. So I just want to say thank you for, for helping out and allowing our, you know, our rec area to be prosper without you. I don't know what they would do, so. Parents and teams for that successful season. So I do know we had a, a couple teams that got first place this year. I can't speak for any more of them, but I know Councilor Thompson's young fellow was on one of them teams and my young fellow was on one of them teams, so they both came first this year, so that's great to see baseball coming back, so. But ball's not over. Fundy Middle High School has a team and who use Veterans Fields at their home turf. This has also, they have also participated in the installation of the pitcher's mound and I want to say special thanks to Joe Stevens for leading that out here and Drew Dugan. With you guys' support and the team, it's been out here installed, no, no damage with any of the equipment in and off the field and you wouldn't even know that any work was done out on the field except for a new mound there, so thank you very much and congratulations on the great job. Please check out their schedule and get out to support the HHF MHS team. The Splash Pad in Canal Beach will be closing for the seizing at the end of Saturday, September 22nd, so that'll be the end of it. I know the weather's still very nice out there, but we all know what's coming here shortly, so they need enough time to be able to close up the buildings and get everything ready for winter. Work is being done at the Day of Venture Center. I know there's some other counselors that will probably touch on that anyway. With much anticipation, the Patrick Connors Recreation Complex is scheduled to open on Tuesday, October 1st. We took a week delay from the last month just to finish up some maintenance and obviously it's 26 degrees and there was low rentals for that week as well, so we can get some extra work done too, so. And I believe that was the only date Simco was able to come. That was another delay, so that's, that's good. It worked out in everybody's favor, so. This is the summer we have accomplished installing the new dehumidifier, new heat pump in the lobby and current upgrades to the new doors to entering the ice surface. Some things that aren't in here is the finaling of the, pretty much the brain that runs the ice surface and runs all the refrigeration that's in there, which was a huge, huge task and knock on wood, it's been very successful and this will be the first season of it of a startup, so that's great to see that there was no bugs or hitches in the programs. Again, the ice season, there will be picks, pucks and sticks and public skating. We're also offering what we used to call private skate, bubble skate. Keep an eye out on the Parks and Rec Facebook page for them dates and times. Once again, there'll be a discounted ice rental time. So that's, with that, I want to take a moment and reflect. Both on, both the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation and Orange Shirt Day takes place on September 30th. The day honors the children who never returned home and survivors of residential schools as well as their families and communities. Public commendation of the tragic and painful history and ongoing impacts of residential schools is a vital component of the reconciliation process. Orange Shirt Day is to raise awareness and promote the concept of every child matters. The orange shirt is a symbol of the stripping away of the culture, freedom and self-esteem experienced by indigenous children over the generations. On September 30th, we encourage and I encourage all to get out, wear an orange shirt and take a moment to reflect on this honor of the thousands of survivors of the residential schools. Thank you.
Okay. This is kind of a short report tonight. Any questions or comments on that tonight? If not, I'm going to move on to the financial statement. I'm looking for a motion tonight, the council accept the financial report for August 2024. I need a motion, yeah, Deputy Mayor, seconded would be, Councilor Thompson, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Nine is old business, the Municipal Emergency Response Plan, EMO. I'm looking for a motion tonight, the council approve the Municipal Emergency Response Plan for Eastern Charlotte. Need a motion for that tonight. Councilor Thompson, thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tid, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. New business, I'm going to go to Councilor Dederaacus first. This is the one you had us add to it, to the thing tonight, so I'm going to let you expand and actually give us a motion that would be, yeah.
Just at first and then bring the motion?
You can do it, yeah. I'll give you the floor.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so this is in regards to bylaw EC-06. This is all terrain vehicles on municipal roads. So I have supported this from the beginning and I think this is a fantastic initiative and this is going to bring, and it does bring forth folks from all over New Brunswick to St. George. And I, so I still support it. However, since its inception, there's been some issues, mainly operators not following the bylaw. So some examples of that would be driving on the side street, so not drive, like driving outside of what's been actually approved, right? So like on Carlton, on Carlton Street, for example. Another example is, you know, you see ATVs driving along the walking trail. So hopefully after re-reviewing our bylaw, we can mend any sort of gaps that there could, that could possibly exist for the sake of public safety. So my move that council sends this bylaw, so bylaw EC-06, to the Public Safety Committee That's my motion.
Yeah, just, I'm just writing it down. I just have to have it in front of me, public safety. For, for review, right? I don't take sure. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Now I need a second. Councilor Lee, thank you. Question or comment on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Councilor Thompson's first. You had us the end of it. Councilor Thompson.
I have a comment. This is more of an enforcement issue than it is a bylaw issue. We pay good money to the RCMP to enforce that bylaw and others and they're not doing their job. We need to chase them and the public needs to chase them by calling them. They need to step up and call the RCMP when they see the bikes not doing what they're supposed to be or on a roadway or a pathway. When they're doing wrong, they're wrong. You have to call the people to make it right. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Alexa, is pre your amending the bylaw?
Councilor Dederaacus, please.
Councilor Dillon, sorry. Okay. To amend that bylaw where it was approved by the minister, I contacted the Federation today. We would have to go back to the minister to make any changes to the bylaw, so it's not as simple as us just reopen it. It has to go through the whole process, which could be difficult and like, I guess, I was going to say in my counsel concern, so I might as well now. It is an enforcement issue and the same as Councilor Thompson just said, we need to have everybody call and if you have an issue, call, call the RCMP, call enforcement, off-road enforcement, whatever. We, we can't do enforcement as a council, I guess, so thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor McKay, you're next.
So I'm just wondering, is there proof as to whether the people that are, are going against the bylaw, are they the people from the ATV Federation or is it just people that aren't even part of that, that they're going to do it regardless, right? Whether there's a bylaw, not a bylaw, whether there's RCMP or not RCMP, like that would be my question.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? This is going to be a fairly close vote, so what I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to call on Councilor Dederaacus. You vote yea on this? Okay. Councilor Hat?
Yes.
Yea? Deputy Mayor Hat?
Aye.
Councilor Lee?
Aye.
Councilor McQuarrie?
Aye.
Councilor McKay?
I will say yea.
Yea, okay. Councilor Thompson?
Yea.
Yea, gotcha, thank you. We're just so much alike. Councilor Tid?
Aye.
Yea.
Yea, gotcha. Thank you. And that's one, two, three, four, five. Five votes to three. That motion is defeated. Okay. Now we move on to 10A, the intersection of Main Street, Riverview Avenue and Latite Road, St. George. I'm, I will entertain a motion that, I'll just entertain the motion tonight. Whoever wants to make the motion can make the motion. Counselor Leah, you'll go ahead with this.
I move that council change the traffic pattern to the intersection of Main Street, Riverview Avenue and Latite Road in St. George to a four-way stop with public advertisement beginning September 20th and the change to take place effective on Sunday, December the 1st.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I need a second there for that. Counselor McKay, gotcha. Thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? That motion is carried unanimously. Okay. Turn the page here. 10B, surplus property. I'm looking for a motion tonight. The council declare a surplus, the property of 14 Glenny Court in Blacks Harbor, PID 15001696 and advertise its sale by tender at a minimum bid of $9,500. I'm going to go, before we, before I entertain the motion, I'm going to go to our CAO.
Thank you, worship. So this would be for asset properties within the village of Blacks Harbor. 14 Glenny Court was previously sold and under the sale agreement, the land wasn't developed, it would be sold back to the municipality for the price of, of the original sale. So that was 9,500. So what we'd be doing with the surplus property was we would put it back on the market with the minimum request of, of $9,500 and hopefully we sell that within the same fiscal year.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Lee, is he moving there?
I move that council declare a surplus, the property of 14 Glenny Court in Blacks Harbor, PID 15001696 and advertise its sale by tender at a minimum bid of $9,500.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second there. Counselor Thompson, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Ted, you're first.
I'm assuming that the same conditions would apply to this if it wasn't developed, sold, be, sold back to the municipality?
Correct. Yep.
Yep. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Counselor Hat, you're next.
What was your response to the CAO?
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, in this passing, yes. 10C, human resources support, PHRS Incorporated. I will look for a motion tonight for this, but Jason, you want to speak on this first?
Thank you, worship. So this would be utilizing PHRS, Human Resources Solutions, for offering human resource support for municipality, municipal staff. This is at cost of 4,000 per month and I think we have to sign on for this for, for a 12-month period. And making sure that it's retainer. So project end date is June 27th, 2025. So, so this would be, most people know Sherry, Sherry DeVoo. She's a well-known HR person within Charlotte County and this would be her company that would be providing the services.
Great. Thank you. At this point, I'll look for a motion from council. Counselor Ted, you're first.
I move that council accept the proposal from PRHS Inc. for human resource support at the cost of 4,000 per month.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second there. Counselor McQuarrie? Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Hat, you're first.
It's for full 12 months? At $4,000 a month?
Yeah, it's a, the, within the, the, within the proposal, the project end date is June the 27th, 2025. So we could extend that beyond that, but overlooking at the scope of what they're trying to accomplish within those months, it would be until next June.
Which would only be six months?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Originally, this proposal was back in May. So, we can extend that to just the first few months.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passing, yes. Correspondence tonight. I have one letter from the Blacks Harbor School. I lost it. Hello, Wayne. I have confirmed with District Office that the fence backstop at the Blacks Harbor School can be removed. Thank you for supporting our school with this project. Sincerely, Tammy Sarette. That's a short letter. Thank you very much. Did you want to explain that one, Counselor McQuarrie?
The old backstop that was put in there by Connor's back, I think when the arc showed up. It's all rusted and it's broken in spots and the kids climb on it and they cut their hands and get all dirty and that. So they wanted it out of there. I said, well, not much we can do without getting permission from your superintendent. So they called, superintendent said, take her down. So we're going to take her down, I guess.
Yeah. Jason, you want to explain?
I did reach out to the Blacks Harbor Elementary School too. So any type of work that we would do there would be when the school is on a like professional training day. So there'd be no students that would be in around the school grounds when we do that work. Like it's, the next date's like November 6.
Okay. There's no motion required on that tonight. So I'm going to go to the public presentation, number 12. Under, under the bylaw EC dash zero one, section 71, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. I ask you to begin by giving your name and civic address for the record. And I will also add during this time that we won't allow anybody to make accusations against anybody on any subject that works for Eastern Charlotte, any members of council or anybody else for that matter. If that happens, I have to stop you and you will be escorted out of the building. You will, and you will lose your opportunity to speak. So at this point, you have five minutes. Chris, you'll have the, you have the clock up here? Just, just, just one second.
Raymond Hall, 108?
Just one second. You don't mind? You got the clock ready to go?
Clock ready. It's not going to be that long.
It's like beat the clock. There it is. It's all official. Look behind you.
Raymond Hall, 108 Mount Pleasant Road. Two things. I don't know if I've heard anybody publicly thank Jason Hat for his service. I think he should be publicly told that he's, his service was well represented. He was a good firefighter and a good chief. Somebody should, from the council, mention it. Second thing, the ATVs, they go right down by our house. Every day by the Mounties and the Mounties don't do a thing. And most of the ones that I've seen, I've been paying attention, are not registered members because there's no stickers, no nothing on their bikes. And they're headed to school or cooks for work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? You still got, you still got, still got four minutes?
I'll pick up.
Oh, you're taking us four? That gives you nine minutes.
Hi, I'm Dave Waltonson, live at 289 Shore Road. In part of what her, she said about the ATV, I never get a chance to talk to Counselor Hat, but your signage, and in polite way, need a little tender love and care. So, Dave, you must be aware when you drive up down through Laurinville, they have the, the cribbing signs, right? I'm wondering, I know, I know, I do believe it's St. George's responsibility or the town's responsibility to put the signage up. But as a ATVer, when you see a common sign, you know that, okay, that's a sign that's addressed to me. And where you, as soon as you come into the tunnel, if you had one of those signs like up in Laurinville, that you could post your stop sign, your direction sign, you could allow different companies that are in that area post their, whether it be food, gas, or whatever in that direction. It'd just be a little better than the little triangle. And I know it was up in hurry. I know it was like, ooh, we got our privileges, go at it. And it's the same thing when you get to the post office. You get a little sign off to the sign. If you had that same cribbing sign, only not as big to identify you're to go this way through town, it might give, I don't think it's going to stop what you have. Those could be kids, could be people that are going to do it, whether we have permission to drive through St. George or not. It's happening. And, and I understand people's concerns, but as a whole, St. George is making hand or fist lots of dollars because whether it be birches, any, any place, any business up the front street. I just think maybe, and again, if we could take a look at the signage a little more in a professional manner and it'd be all uniformal. So any biker that comes down here will say, hey, that's a biker sign. This is the direction I need to go instead of looking at a triangle sign on a set of springs. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Anybody else think?
Karen Kernigan, 108 Latite Road. I'm just wondering about this four-way stop on the main street of St. George. I know it's first come, first served, but I was over at the corner this, this afternoon at 3:30 and cooks was getting done. This was at the, by the Irving. Cooks was getting done and the buses were coming down and the students and everything. And it was, it was kind of mass confusion right there with, you know, who's going to let who go? And everybody was there. So it was kind of pushing and shoving. So I'm just thinking with this four-way stop, I'm just kind of wondering how it's gonna, how it's going to work. So, you know, if I'm the second one there and I know I'm second, but I haul out and the third one comes and hits me and he says, oh, I had the right of way before she did. I'm just wondering how much confusion it's going to cause in the town. But that's my concern.
Thank you very much for coming in, Karen. Always a pleasure to have you. Anybody else going once, twice, three times? That's it. Okay, folks, we're going to move, we're going to move forward tonight. Next is statements by members of council. People are wondering what I have these wooden fish here tonight for. The camera can pick up some of these. All the mayors of Charlotte County were given these this past month. Our, our school of fish, the turquoise represents October the 8th International Dyslexia Day. Red is for, for mark. It's, it is red for October Dyslexia Campaign. Gold is for our little goldfish waiting to shine. And this October, we're adding a green fish, which is this one right here, which is kind of separated from, from the group. And green is for hope that we do better. Thank you for creating awareness in our communities. Dyslexia doesn't get better with time. It gets better with intervention. So I'm going to ask the, our town staff tomorrow to find a spot and a home for these in the town hall. It'd be great. On September the 27th, at 6:30 here in St. George, and actually St. Stephen and St. Andrews as well, is called Take Back the Night. Charlotte County Abuse Prevention Network invites you to an evening of light yoga, movement and meditation dedicated to ending sexual violence and gender-based violence. This evening's focus is, is on eradicating sexual violence in all its forms, including assault, abuse, trafficking, stalking, harassment, and relationship violence while, while supporting survivors through the recovery process. It's about fostering safe communities and notably, no community regardless of size is immune to these issues, including Eastern Charlotte. I would be present to represent not only St. George, but the broader Eastern Charlotte area, which compromises, which comprises a vast geographic region of nearly 8,000 residents. As a father of two daughters, I understand the significance of awareness on this topic and I extend my gratitude to the event organizers for creating a secure and supportive environment where survivors can unite, embrace healing, and raise awareness within our community of Eastern Charlotte. That's about all I have for tonight. I'm going to go there. Deputy Mayor?
As per the signage, the town is working on it. Ron has ordered a bunch of poles and stuff. Yeah, it's been late, but the town crew's been very busy this summer. So that's being worked on. I agree with Alexa. We need enforcement. It's been asked. Just as a heads up, when a blitz happens, it's going to be cell phones, seat belts, everything. So everybody make sure you got your, everything in order, I guess. Thank you.
I'll just add to that before we move on. When, when we ask for the blitz to be put on, it is a double-edged sword. It's, they're brought here for a reason, but also people have to remember that if you're not doing something right as well, and we all do it. We don't put our seatbelt on quite in time. We're going a little bit over the speed limit. You know, we're, we're, we're going to get caught in, in that net, net as well. So just be careful. It's a double-edged sword and we ask for this, that RCMP crew to come in into the area. I'm going to, Counselor Thompson?
Jason Hat is 36 years in the fire service in Eastern Charlotte. He has had a plaque given to him by the fire people of Eastern Charlotte and a group of his peers. Personally like to thank him for his 36 years of service. That's a long time. He started at a very young man and thank you very much.
Counselor Hat?
All right. Got a few things. So first one is, is I just want to reach out and say, a few years ago, Raymond Savoy started a project in Blacks Harbor. And him and his family and a few friends went and cut down all the trees and cleaned up the old, what we used to call the ball hockey court beside the arena. And at that time, it was cleaned up. He did a wonderful job on it. And there's been two or three different attempts on trying to make that, you know, back to a usable space. So I'm pretty proud to say that, yeah, it's took a long time to get funding and whatnot, but this year, that will be a new paved area and the start, the process of turning it back into a usable rec area for the youth to use in Blacks Harbor for all of Eastern Charlotte, to be honest. So that's, that's a great thing. Jason, that's supposed to happen before snow flies, the asphalt to be down, right? Okay. So then we'll have to, you know, move the playground and all that kind of stuff. But phase one of it is to get the old one tore out of there, leveled up, drainage done with the paving. So I just wanted to say thank you to Raymond Savoy. It hasn't, hasn't gone off the radar. It's just been a long time. And you know what? When I first started in council, I always heard the government was slow. I just didn't realize it was this slow. So, all right. Number two is, I'm going to ask that the Public Safety Committee would look at, and I'll ask Jason to get pricing, on a flashing crosswalk sign for down by the school area in Blacks Harbor. There's no flashing sign, kids crossing the road there. That's, that's part A of it. Part B is, that's still 50 kilometer an hour zone through there, I believe. Correct? So cars are still?
The school area is 30, 30 kilometers.
30? Well, perfect. So there's no signs there that are like bright yellow to give that. So cars are floating down through there all the time. So there's been several complaints in the last six months of it. And do you know what? The other day I was there and somebody was floating down through there over 100 kilometers an hour easy. And we all know where they were headed. It was five minutes to the ferry leave. So at the end of the day, not saying that that's going to stop them, but my goodness, I wouldn't lay my head on a pillow at night if something happened, a kid got creamed down there if we couldn't do some better signage. So I would look at some pricing for signage down in that area. And I would think some of that would be the responsibility of the province to help with that as well. So, number three, are these bottles in front of me? No, I'm not making moonshine. So 54 weeks ago, we had a boiler order, or just about 54 weeks ago, in Blacks Harbor coming into a festival season. That was going to be the fix. Then they dug up the farm. We all remember it. Well, here we are 54 weeks later, and we're asking people to drink this. So I'll get to that state here in a second. So just for clarity, it's settled. So this is sediment that is out of a filter. Yes, it's out of a filter at my house. As you can see, that's not normal, but that is normal in Blacks to come out of our filter housing. This was took one hour and 48 minutes ago. Still cold. Yellow. This is out of a water cooler, one hour and 49 minutes ago at my house. So to say that the water's been fixed in 54 weeks, nope. Still a problem going on. And in 54 weeks, we can't get a problem fixed. How is that acceptable? So I'm going to ask, this is chlorinated water. Would anybody on council like a glass of this and drink this? No. But we're asking residents to pay for that with no plan that the public actually would have any input into knowing when the end date of this is going to be fixed. Yeah, that we hear that there's a water main break again. There's going to be water main breaks. This has gone on a year. Our system is so dirty with harsh sediment. It's time, fix it. Get it flushed. Drain the towers. Whatever it needs to be done, it's going to be winter here shortly. We're not going to be able to put ice in with water like that. We're going to be using a lot of paint if that's the case. using a lot of paint, if that's the case. It's time for it to be fixed. Thank you.
Counselor Dedaracus?
Well, just to respond to what you just said, Counselor Hat, like, water, I mean, don't have to say this, it's pretty obvious. Water is such a fundamental part of our day-to-day life. We cook with it, we wash our clothes with it, we prepare, in my case, like, I prepare formula for my child with it. So to answer your question, no, absolutely not. I do not want to feed my, my, my child that type of water, and I don't expect anyone else here to feed their child that water, or themselves that water, either. So, yeah, 54 weeks is far too long, and we need to do something about it ASAP. So that's one thing I want to say. The second thing is, your worship, you skipped out the section about like the committee reports. I had something to say about the age-friendly committee as well, so I'll just add that right now.
Oh, no, I, no, you already had.
Yeah, no, so we have tentatively set a date for, on Sunday, October 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, for an open house here at the, at the MacDavick Place. The committee should be able to draft an action plan for council for approval in December, and then proceed with the other recognition application in January or February. So that's just a little update of where we're at with that, and just to let the public know, there's still some time to complete the survey online. I believe it's another week, so when you have a second, please fill that out. And the last thing is, you know, now that it is budget season, hopefully council can come together, we can find a date for a public working session to discuss the budget, so then people, the people in the public can come into the meeting and participate accordingly. We did this last year, and hopefully we can do this again for this year. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Counselor McQuary.
Nothing, I just got one comment to Counselor Adam there, on the school zone. Mounties were there Monday in the parking lot, sitting there watching them, and DPS was there today. So, I don't know if anybody's been doing a lot of complaining.
Yeah, there's been a lot of complaining. This is not a debate time. This is just your comment time. You're done? Counselor Lee, you're next.
You say that date was the 20th? Okay. The only thing I'd like to respond to Karen's comments on the four-way stop, that's a, that's a bad intersection. We've had many, many people ask us to do something about it. There's a near miss there every day, and I know exactly what you're saying, because every time I come through there, coming from Latite, you know, everybody's kind of looking around, and sometimes if you start across an intersection, you can't see over the hill, and they're, they don't pay attention to the speed limit. And I've got, been caught myself halfway across the intersection and had to sit there while someone got out around me at 80 kilometers an hour. So, we're gonna try the four-way stop. They work everywhere else. It's gonna take some getting used to, and that's why we set it out to December the 1st, because we're gonna educate everybody on what's going on there, and the correct way. There is a correct way to proceed in one of those four-way stops, if everybody comes there at the same time. And we'll do that also, but I don't think most people pay attention to that. They just, like you say, first come, first serve. It should improve. At least everybody's gonna be stopped. They're not gonna be two people stopped and other people trying to filter their way through at high speeds, because there is, every, every day, there's a near miss there. I don't think there's many people on council that haven't had at least one close call there. And there's nothing we can do other than this. Can't move the church. Unfortunately, it's got, you're blinded on the side of the hill there, so hopefully, to your point, this will make it much better. It's gonna take a while for people to get used to it, but stop signs is a stop sign.
Anything else, Counselor, in the evening?
No.
Counselor Tid?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and just to speak on the water situation in Blacks. I realize that we may not own the source, but we are charging residents of Blacks Harbor for water and sewage. The municipality is collecting that. I think we need to do everything possible in Eastern Charlotte as a council to rectify that situation as best as, to our ability. I know that may be limited, but we need to at least flush the lines and see what we can do, because that's just unacceptable, unacceptable to charge our residents for that type of drinking water.
Thank you, Counselor Ted. Counselor McKay, you're next.
I also want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and all your comments and whatever, but I want to comment on Counselor Hat. I agree 100% with what you're saying, Counselor Tid's saying. Everybody, it is, it's deplorable, and people should not be drinking that water.
Great. I just, I did forget one item to mention tonight. I did some shuffling up of the committees this past month. I just want to announce it to the public tonight. It's been working good, actually very well with council. The committees of council, under finance, and I'll go through the whole list, so everybody will understand. Under finance, which it takes in estimates, budgets, surplus items, grants, insurance, debentures, that is chaired by our deputy mayor now, and all members of council will be sitting on that committee now. Number two, the public works, the roads, streets, public works, transportation, street lighting, water, and wastewater, that is chaired by Counselor McQuary, and all members of council are a member of that committee. Number three, parks and recreation, which takes in the arena, parks, beach, boating, museum, events, is chaired by Counselor Adam Hat, and all members of council are members of that committee. Under public safety, number four, which takes in the policing, EMO, and bylaw enforcement, is chaired by Counselor Lee, and all members of council are members of that committee. Under fire services, which takes in all the, the fire, which takes in the Fire Department of Eastern Charlotte, is chaired by Counselor Thompson, and all members of council are now members of that committee. Number six, personnel committee, hiring, which takes in hiring, policies, and the union, is chaired by Counselor Tid, and the members are Counselor McKay, Counselor Lee, Counselor McQuary, Counselor Dedaracus, Counselor Thompson, and Deputy Mayor Hat. Number seven, the administration committee, which takes in legislation, bylaws, economic development, housing, is chaired by Counselor McKay, and all members of council are a member of that committee. Number eight, health services, which takes in garbage collection, public health, the clinic, cemeteries, is chaired by Counselor Dedaracus, and all members of council, of council are members of that. The mayor is a member of all committees, and the committee chairs, after consulting with the CAO, shall send notices of meetings to every member of the committees at least 24 hours ahead of time with an agenda, unless there's an emergency situation. Date and location of our next regular council meeting is Wednesday, October the 16th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, right here at MacDavick Place, and I'm gonna look for a motion for adjournment tonight. Counselor, Counselor McQuary, I guess you had your hand up there. Thank you very much for coming in, folks. You guys can go out and enjoy the weather tonight.